She said. I'm. You just broke. You don't. You can't. You can be really. That's why I said. So good. I was just trying to.
I should have heard about. I was considering.
You're you're. Actually, you know, that's why I couldn't give you the last. So I. See, you don't. Are you not ready?
That was.
See, that's what.
Yeah. That's the best of my savings. You're more than that.
It's not. You so big. No, it's.
Yeah, I'm not.
There's gonna be. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they all have. It's like most activities, I want to get them there. I was honest, I lived in Texas for five years, you know. And and you know. We're not here. I heard several. We need to. We need to.
Pressing around.
Yeah.
It's.
Actually, so she had love. Instead of.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the issue, I was getting drunk for a second. We we. We didn't see him on our way to the. So there's no way to have a. I'm set a beer here by the state.
My experience.
We need to have that. Yeah. Uh, that's what. We talk. Uh, about the.
Yeah.
When.
Yeah. No. It's not, we still say. Just a thing. For the election.
Oh, I don't.
No.
Of course, you have.
So. It's all right, it's still working.
Don't worry about that, just set it up there real carefully.
See, trying to throw it. I did take a plan.
All because.
And then, as you said, they die. But in the. You sure they have some tax. Matthew. So. The. August twenty fifth nineteen. Is there any vote on that?
I'm just getting tripping out the dryer. The camera. I think it's.
How do you want to move? I can't see you, but.
In front of the TV.
Liz at Lawrence.
We got a little bit of the corner.
Know this actually. Because that is another. It maybe. Obviously, this is a really small. Yeah. This is. You know, it's it's so. Or. Power is broken inside. But. Yeah. The antics. So. Yeah. They're. All of these things now.
Just your back. Did you send a backdrop?
There it is, yeah.
It's like the. Because that's what you're gonna see Sean Sean that people get coffee and they'll be all stuff. It's a thing of the body or you can. You say. You know, or digital. So you can.
Let me.
She was sitting. Was kind of the same thing and drive it like a. Island thing. Or a theory is I'm trying to get something more local. But it's the Trinity River. It's got a bear when you move, you kind of tell that they're.
Yes.
It's like the one I was. I was asking. It's hard for me, but I can't navigate out there very well, so it's it's confusing to check out. It's just. It's. Yeah.
There's a moment. They get a couple of. Actually. They're saying that. All right, I see. All right. That wasn't working. We do. We're involved.
Yes. Again. Yeah. I'm officially testing out my software here, so. Are you? I gotta I gotta pull that.
Yeah. So that's. He should.
Feel like great.
Making good.
Yeah. Brother, put the pressure over. It's that movie, uh, Who's Yours? You know, we keep having. Samuel Boyce makes it a good. Yeah, no, I. Okay. So. We have one more. Point of housekeeping in that last public hearing, reopen that. A few minutes and get some things established. On a set a date and time, Matt, if you would. Explain the procedures we need to go forward with.
So there are, uh, we have to have a. We need a date set for the hearing to properly consider whether or not to grant petition and set the election.
Okay.
And that hearing requires a twenty one day notice period with both newspaper publication and posting in court. Now, if. After that period, y'all order the election, there's another twenty one day notice period. Uh, before the election itself. Okay? So that would that wouldn't wouldn't start till October.
Right.
Uh, or first week of October in any event. But, um, we, uh, there's also the deadlines to order the election they consider under, uh, uh, the general election laws. And that has to be, uh, by this August seventeenth, the special election or general election has to be ordered. So after, uh, part with Clint about all this, what I think and, uh, we could do is set, uh, the hearing to consider whether or not to grant petition for August the twenty fifth, that's a regular meeting of the commissioners' court. And then. All the notices being published, et cetera, you go ahead and set, you you order, commissioner's court will order the election. Uh, which has to be done by August seventeenth, so it'd be the Monday or two, second Monday before. Uh, and then you come to court on the twenty fifth, if you, uh, if commissioner's court, uh, grants petition, we set the election, we're ready to rock and roll, we already have the election order. If they decline, uh, commissioner's court declines, uh, the petition at that point, then you still have time to cancel, uh, that election for the. So that still gives, uh, enough space to do all that, that gives us enough time to, uh, if we run into any issues with the publisher's schedule, uh, and make sure that we still get it published within that amount of time. Uh, get all our deadlines fixed, so.
Summary, what are the dates again?
Twenty fifth, I'm asking that y'all, uh, or recommend that y'all, uh, set the petition, uh, for review to determine whether or not it should be granted and election order on the issue of E S D number eight or the twenty fifth at nine AM. Just all you're doing today is is voting to set that date. That's it, so you're just voting to say on the twenty fifth, we're going to, uh, uh, consider whether or not to grant that.
Is it truly a vote today?
Uh, just to say that, uh, it does take commissioner's court to set that here date.
Is that considered to be included in the, uh, agenda for this public hearing?
Uh, I think. Um.
They've got to know by the seventeenth, what are they gonna happen like?
Yeah, that's. That's the issue we're running into. Probably wouldn't want it more specifically worded, but we're gonna run out of, out of time.
Yeah.
I guess we, uh, as as a failsafe, we could. Knowing that's the likely day, uh, start, you know, working, uh, to to make that happen without pulling the trigger on anything.
Yeah.
We could call a special meeting for later this week.
Let's do that. Yeah, that way, I don't want to get anything out of procedure.
No, I agree, I agree.
Uh, you can have send to our. Uh, occasion to be. To establish this August twenty fifth petition, correct?
That's correct, so you could have. Uh, we should be able to do it all with Friday.
Okay. We'll sit.
Do you have an option?
Oh.
Yeah, I guess not.
We'll have our emotional Friday. And there's never a little Friday, Santas's day. All right, all right, we're gonna close this public hearing. And, uh, Clint, would you do your favor? I think I need to see on that. So wrap that. I say these fans, uh, like you're working in a dairy or something. I'm just. Yeah.
I'm so thankful for.
Yeah. Well, you know, there's a lot of questions. And really, that's. That's what we did, and this is. What do you go about this?
Although not an attorney, extremely educated in the subject matter.
Although then still, there's a lot of folks that that need to understand the process, the process correctly. And the main thing is. But no more hollering in my corporate and no more outbursts. Yeah. Because I will. Yeah. All right. Now. Regular agenda. About twenty eight, twenty twenty nine AM, well, actually, we're closer to about quarter to ten, so we just ran over just a little bit for the public hearing, which is five to me. Uh. First time it's called order, we don't have a form established. Commissioner Reeves is here with us today, Commissioner Howard today.
Say it.
Yeah. Commissioner Wilson's there with us, all the far reaches of precinct four. Good morning. And, uh, Reeves and Greg are here as well. So we have a form established, we would all rise to the side, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, and the chair is gonna lead us. And where he has prepared for that.
Please face the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the. I have a safe America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, please face the Texas flag. I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Trade me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we want to thank you for this time that you've given us to come together as leaders, Lord, Lord, I just ask a special blessing on everybody that's elected or in charge of organization or department, Lord, I just ask that, even though we may have a different opinion sometimes, that we work together and and do what we elected to do for the good of all the public, Lord. Lord, we thank you for your son Jesus that came and died on the cross for our sins, Lord, and we know if we do your will, we have a chance to be with you in everlasting life and heaven. We fall short, in your son Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
It's like, hey, uh, David Mendez, David, how are you doing in Austin, Texas?
He's muted.
He's muted.
Um. I'm sorry, I just muted everybody. Where's he at?
Out there.
Judge, sorry about that, uh, I was muted and had, uh, trouble finding the button.
Welcome to our age and I, it's all right.
Uh, if I could, Judge, I'm covering two commissioner court meetings simultaneously, one open in northeast Texas and yours, and so, uh, whenever you get to my, I I'm monitoring your stuff, but if I'm, uh, if if anything, uh, i- if I miss something, uh, uh, hit me with a quick text. If you could.
Real big, okay, Dave?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, uh, first, uh, number four, consent agenda, I hope you've all had the opportunity to look over this, if you have anything, uh, question concerned, uh, we have some add-ons, uh, oath and dedication of Tammy Bishop, uh, starting date of the August first, we've got shares office. And sure, sure, you will take care of the other dedication. And. Love it. On that consent agenda, there are. Two expenditures, that's number seven on your list for the, is that a police department, I have the police chief here with me, Kelvin Burks, explain or answer any questions you got about those two items, we're asking you to do is spend about six thousand dollars of non taxpayer drug dealer money to purchase two things for the, the, they had a police department, cop sync is one, it says, the bit says co logic, what that's commonly referred to is cop sync, it's a communications device, report writing device, license plate. Input, uh, information device that they use, that they want, that they need, and the second one are two radars that's run traffic with, so the chief's here to answer any questions, specific questions, uh, beyond the. My ability to answer if you have them. Chief, and then y'all need it pretty bad. Not so, not not completely. Don't say that. All of them are full like that. Yes, I know. You have any questions about? No, we're good, it's like a big engine, can't say. I'm.
I have a couple additions, Judge.
Sir?
I have a couple I need, uh, changes I need to make on the warrants payable.
All right.
I want to add, uh, one payment to Vista Solutions Group for nine thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. This is some money from a grant that Clint has for some voter voter security storage, and I have one payment to integrated data services on y'all's list is for three thousand four hundred forty two dollars and fifty cents, that should be seventeen hundred and twenty one dollars and twenty five cents.
Seventeen what, Dwayne?
Seventeen hundred twenty one dollars and twenty five cents.
I have a question on. So all that stuff, can we repurpose it somewhere?
If you want to, it's just all up in one of the. And they were tricky.
Anybody need Crystal Street? Two of them.
It's a huge wide one, I don't know if they belong to or if they're even county, but you would like them to know.
Sure. Can you get anything to be answered?
I know, thank you.
Really, we prefer to approve a consent agenda with, uh, Dwayne's additions.
Okay.
And a motion, Greg, secondly, on to approve with additions, as stated, all favors say a, uh, likewise, thanks. And motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you. Number five, Senator, approve the imposition of optical optional fees for county year twenty twenty one for part of a bigger fee.
Uh, Judge, this is kind of the same thing you do each year, uh, I recommend that the court keep the fees the same, no increase in fee, uh, to the taxpayers, it's a ten dollar road and bridge fee that for registration, so. Talked about these. I recommend if you pay what we had to place the ten dollar.
And that ten dollar road and bridge fee just for clarification is for land acquisition, is that correct?
Uh, I'm not sure how y'all reroute it, to me, we just pay it to you.
Okay.
Split, it's split. I think it's split between, uh, road and bridge and land acquisition.
Yeah.
We just collected, and when the state gives it to us, we turn it over to the treasury and then, I'm not sure how it's allocated for that one.
Okay. Thank you. To approve. Motion, please, second, Greg, to approve, all favors say a. Would you rate handling?
It's a.
All right, motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number six, an order authorizing issuance of Liberty County, Texas combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, here we go. Authorizing the sale thereof and enacting provisions incident and related to the issuance of said certificates. And, uh, Mr. Mendez is over here, David's with, uh, major staff. And Austin, he is, uh, helping us in this, uh, effort today.
I'm I'm ready, Judge, I'm gonna let James lay out, uh, the findings from the sale.
All right, James Gilligan also is with us today too, James, if you would, please.
Yes, thank you, Judge, uh, for the record, my name's James Gilli with U.S. Capital Advisors, uh, representing the county, he's your financial advisor, uh, Judge, uh, do you by chance, uh, was the packet distributed to the members of the, uh, to the commissioners, the bond sale summary?
No.
With the.
It just came in, came in a little bit late to us to get it out to. Town members, so if you would, uh, would explain it out, if you can, whatever details necessary.
Okay, absolutely, uh, well, um, yesterday morning, we solicited bids for the purchase. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble here.
Okay, James, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All righty, well, I'll just talk, I'll talk my way through it, uh, yesterday morning, we solicited bids, uh, from, uh, from investors across the country for the purchase of the county's, uh, uh, twenty five million dollars certificates of obligation, uh, for the sheriff's station and justice center, uh, we had a fantastic result, uh, the, we received a total of nine bids from different underwriters, uh, and the best bid went to Piper Sandler and Company out of Minneapolis, Minnesota, they submitted a true interest cost of one point eight eight nine three two three percent, so just under one point eight. so just under 1.89% for the purchase of the county's certificates of obligation. Now, after, after adjusting the final maturities, the, the final true interest cost was adjusted down to 1.862840. And so, yes, you're, you're hearing that correctly, that's an interest rate of, true interest cost of under 2%, which is just a fantastic result. We, we offered these, the, the bonds for sale in a competitive auction type sale. So when we see a result like this, where I, I wish that y'all had the, had the opportunity to review the sale summary, I apologize for getting that in late, but we had eight underwriters clustered around an interest rate around 1.95. And what that tells us is that on the market, as of the market yesterday morning, the, the market was right around 1.95, but Piper Sandler and Company was allowed to aggressively outbid its competitors to the county's advantage. And we, this, I don't, I don't want to get into the weeds, and I apologize for being too technical, but as, as your financial advisor, we just get really excited when we see a result like this, because that tells us that the county got the absolute best interest rate that was available in, in the market as of yesterday. So we're, we're very happy with the results, and we, we, we hope that the county is just as pleased as we are. I will note that the, the final par amount is, will be 23,410,000. And you recall that the, the notice of intention stated in amount, the notice of intention that the court adopted a few months ago, stated an amount not to exceed $25 million. Well, the winning underwriter bid a net premium to the county. And so what that premium did is it, part of what, of the premium went to pay for the cost of issuance, and, and in addition to that, it went to buy down the, it went to reduce the principal amount required. So the, notwithstanding that the final principal amount is under $25 million, the county will have $25 million to spend on the project, on, on the, the project, a, as stated. I'm just, can't emphasize enough, we're just so excited with the results, I mean, to get, to get nine offers is just, is just a great result, it indicates to us that it was, is a very competitive sale and very transparent. And we're just, we're very happy to, for the county, and honored to represent y'all as your financial advisor. I, out of respect for your time, I don't want to go on too, too long, but the transaction, if the, if the commissioners approve the ordinance, approve the agenda item before you, the transaction is expected to close on or about August, August 27th in about 30 days. And so I, at this point, I'd be happy to entertain any questions, but if there are no questions, I'd, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Hey, I'm just checking, you okay? Yeah, I gotta go. Okay.
I'm sorry, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mendez for, to answer questions about the, the ordinance, if there are no questions.
David?
Judge, congratulations on the, on the bid. You had before you an order which, with a motion, motion and second, would be, would authorize you to accept the offer, and then authorized me to send the bonds to the Attorney General for their approval. Are there any questions about the, the order that I could address?
Lee, are you okay? Boo?
Aye.
Alright, the, one thing I will say is the, going into this venture, and speaking with James about it, we anticipated.
Oh, Lord, help. Oh, my poor mother.
Oh, Lord, help, we spent a few bucks on here, right? The, we anticipated an interest rate of roughly 2%, which when we came in under 2%, I was like, I can't believe this, but then again, it's the times, one thing. The second thing is, the county's bond saving has improved in the last five years especially. Not saying anything for all of us parents and sons of that, but it's been a team effort, especially, you know, with working with Kim and her office, and Dwayne in his office in Anshel. And it, it has shown, you know, with our, our monitoring through standards and pores, we have drastically increased our options. So it's, hopefully in our next endeavor, James, when we get down that road for another project such as this, we can even get better ratings, but I don't know if it's gonna hold you down. You know, that, that, maybe seven, eight years down the road, maybe less, we don't know.
Yes, thank you, Judge, if I may, I apologize for not having brought that up, but the, you're correct, the rating report from standards and pores was included in the, in the bond sale summary, so I'd encourage all the commissioners to, to read through that. But stated, some of the highlights of the rating report were that the county's strong, strong and conservative budgetary practices, your, your strong liquidity, your cash reserves, all contributed to a very, an excellent double A rating. And, and Judge, you're absolutely correct, we are in a low interest rate environment, but notwithstanding, it's the county's strong credit, your strong double A rating that allowed you to participate in the, in the public market and access these, these incredibly low rates, so I commend you for your, your conservative and prudent budgetary practices, and I encourage you to continue those going forward.
Thank y'all so much. Okay, well, what we have now is the opportunity to order to vote on this order organizing issue, this combination tax revenue certificate obligation. And I think we've talked about it enough, so what is the board, what is the court's plan?
Second.
Got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve, all favor say aye. And voting issue that, just thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Forward, and James, thank you for all your help, and David, for all yours, and if I ever make it back to Austin, whatever that backdrop is, you're sitting in front of us, I need to go sit there for a while.
It, it's a flock of turkeys over at the, that, that, that kind of hang out there, sorry.
It's alright, thank y'all, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Number seven, considering free request for hazard free, Liberty County Sheriff's Office requests for the condition officers to receive an extra $8 an hour, and the administrative staff to receive $4 extra an hour for each hour of work during any Texas governor's executive order and/or Liberty County judge's executive order, and/or an order by a mayor of a major city in Liberty County that is enforced and has an ordinance or ordinance is that law enforcement personnel may be required to enforce starting date, requesting the 7/28/2020, the date approved by Liberty County Commissioners Court. This extra pay would remain enforced until September 30th, 2020 was the end of our current budget year, or until the executive order is canceled, whichever comes first. Funds would be paid for Liberty County Sheriff's Office payroll line item, chair bits, a long description, but it's a good description.
I will start off with an apology from the last time we had, I went to Matthew and he told me I was gonna lose, and I just, you know, go down hard. He was right, and I apologized to Dwayne for frustrating him too. And Matthew, and I kind of went over this at our first meeting to do this, and so I'm taking his recommendation to start now instead of trying to go back, let's just, I don't know if it's gonna last a week or a month or whatever it'll be, but Dwayne has shot me some figures, and it's, it's covered in there, he may have something to say in this, but I have no employees, his concern was anybody coming affecting the insurance, I have nobody that'll be eligible for insurance till after the new budget year, any new employees. I guess if you have any questions, Dwayne did it, I, I believe I've got the money in the budget to pay for it, Dwayne?
One question.
Two.
You did have positions that had not been filled, what are your positions? Were they all filled?
No, sir, I've, I've got, had five of them positions, we got three, three filled.
Okay.
And they're all in, like I said, the insurance will not be affected, that's one of the major costs.
It is a major cost, but it would impede your ability to hire those other two positions if you do this, I'm just throwing this out there.
Okay. Help, we could exclude them, if you want to exclude the two new hires that we have coming on.
I just want to make sure that y'all have a full staff, you know?
Yes, sir.
As we do discuss boots on the ground, make it, make it full.
Right, and I mean, they would come on, I don't know, they will not come on until the middle or end of August.
Okay, and the budget runs out in August.
The budget runs out September, sorry, there's extra money in the budget to cover that, Dwayne would know, but I think it's an extra uh, twenty or $25,000 to cover a month and a half. And, and the payroll is about.
That's in your salary, that would cover that.
Yes, sir. Lenny, did you have any comments?
Oh, what he's proposing, uh, excluding his health insurance, which I don't want anybody, I'd strongly be against anybody moving a penny out of any line item in health insurance for any department in the county, as I've mentioned to y'all before, the, currently this year, our health and insurance fund is $1.1 million underfunded. And at the end of the year, I'm gonna go through and go through all departments of the general fund and road and bridge, and if there's any money left in those line items, I'm gonna transfer them to the benefit insurance fund to try to increase its lifespan. But in the sheriff's personnel line items for salaries and retirement, FICA and all that, at, without filling any positions, it has $316,896.58 left over. What he's proposing would cost $292,370.42. If he filled, I had four deputy positions unfilled. If he filled those, it would cost an additional $34,000, and if he added the $8 hazardous duty pay, the total cost if he added those new deputy positions would be $46,109.84, thereabouts. This is y'all's decision, so.
I'd, I'd sit and ask if he had a recommendation, work in that, what it would be. I'm asking for the $8, but I would like something for both of them, I mean, if you went down to $7 and $3, just something that I could reward the people for working there and all this for. And we're, we're going on a theory, first of all, that it's gonna last till September 30th, and then we're going on the theory also that the positions will be filled.
I think according to Facebook, it's gonna last till November 4th.
Ms. Harris?
Yes, sir.
Do you have the money to pay your employees hazardous duty pay?
I don't.
Uh, Mr. Douglas?
Yes, sir.
Do you have the money to pay your employees hazardous duty pay?
No, sir, I do not.
Mr. Gott?
Uh, I couldn't pay him if I wanted to, except by the district judges, but we probably wouldn't, but.
Commissioner Wilson?
My concern is, and I've told you this before, Bobby, I, I believe that all our employees need to be paid hazardous duty pay if, if you know, if, if one division is, I know our deputies do. I, I, I really have a problem with nobody else in the county being able to pull this off for their employees, I would love to pay my employees hazardous duty pay. I would, I would love to, because we're out there amongst that public quite a bit. Not, not as often as quiet as your deputies are, but we are. Last week, I had three employees working for the, for the county here in this precinct because of the COVID. So my concerns is, is that nobody else within the county is gonna have the abilities to do this, and I think it's fair that each division has the abilities to do that.
I don't worry your concerns, Commissioner, but when it first hit, I bet every, every department, including road and bridge, went to part-time shifts working two days and every day as Liberty County Sheriff's Office, even for administrative, canceled all vacations, comp time, everything else, we were there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We were handling calls, going to people that had COVID, we had infections also, we had four deputies and two dispatchers come down with it. I'm just asking that you pay them for the hours that they work, and they're exposing themselves with this pandemic.
Now, with this $8 an hour, would it also cover time and a half or comp time?
No, no, sir, it's just regular hours is what it would be. I, I plan it on the 171 during a 28 day cycle.
So if we were to do this, Sheriff, basically what we're doing is for the time being is phasing out the openings that you have available, correct?
We're paying them from the unused payroll, yes, sir.
So you would be phasing out the current positions that you have available?
No, sir, it's accumulated what we have not had since the last budget started on COVID first, accumulated, we haven't had 100% filled positions, we're just using the unused salary from those positions.
But you wouldn't be able to hire any new, new deputies until this ends, correct?
No, sir, we should be able to hire them, we've got the bu, money in the budget, it's been budgeted. I'm not projecting using board money, I'm projecting what we have not used.
Lee only had five positions, and what, two, three weeks ago that were open?
Yes, sir.
He filled three.
Three.
And he just needs to fill two more positions, so the other 100% staff.
Right.
According to position chart.
See.
The way I understand it, you're not, the money that hadn't been used, but you're still reserving that money for those two deputies in case you.
Right, the money that has not been used is from the open positions each month, and we, I had it figured out to the end of October, going to the end of June, we had a certain amount of money, that's what I budgeted paying those employees their hourly pay for the staff or the.
You know, none of us been through a pandemic, and I hope we never have to go through another one. But our officers have been out there on the ground since this has started, while other crews, including road and bridges, has been off on a rotation so that we may not infect everybody there. I believe we owe the officer something.
I don't disagree with that. But, one, as long as it doesn't affect the, the openings that Bobby currently has, and two, if I see, or if we see that maybe we can do the same for other divisions.
As far as the other divisions, uh, my crew is on half, so I mean, they're actually sitting at home for two days getting paid for it. They are getting compensated, I feel.
Okay, what about Ms. Harris? Bruce?
I believe each head, a department head is gonna have to answer that on theirself, I'm just answering it for.
We've had a few already answer that, and they've, they've said no.
Every department, excuse me, every department head has had the ability to adjust their schedule to meet the, you know, to minimize their people's exposure, we've done that, we've done that, normally I wouldn't be in favor of something like this, because it encourages department heads, well, I'm just gonna not fill that position so I can give my people a raise later on. But we put these men and women out there, they've been exposed to not only their everyday hazard of their job, but the initial hazard of the and for that reason, I'm gonna make my own way.
I've got motion for Greg.
All right, got motion for Greg. Second, for my thought that was booed and sounded pretty loud. All right, um, got a motion second, all favor say aye.
I've got one other question that I'd like to, uh, pose to the court. If y'all remember, Greg, back when, uh, I first took office, uh, what was transpiring in this precinct under previous administration? And basically about the same thing. And at that time, if my memory serves me correctly, I thought we put a stop to that. Are we going to reverse this today?
Like I said, I'm not normally in favor of that, but this is extenuating circumstances that we've, uh, we've had. Uh, I'm not going to reverse the whole policy, but in this particular case, you know, if, if somebody gives, in the future, somebody comes up and can justify it, I'd be willing to listen to it.
Mr. Commissioner Wilson, I've sent some stuff to Mr. Poston to make him, maybe make an amendment if he sees fit to address everybody, but the sheriff's department's stuff, dealing with hazard pay during a pandemic. We do not have it in the handbook, anything addressed to it, and some amendment needs to be made. And, uh, maybe possibly funding in the county, some line item, the way you could find or something.
I understand, Sheriff, I, I'm not against this.
Yes, sir, I don't think.
I understand, but I think it's fair that other individuals throughout this county, department heads, you know, we're going to give to one, we should all be able to give to the others. That's my thoughts.
And my reason I did this is because my men and women never took a day off, ever. They came in, the day was declared the pandemic, and we've been working.
I don't disagree with that, Bobby. I'm preaching to the choir.
Yeah.
You know, uh, I know law enforcement, I'm still a law enforcement officer.
Yes, sir.
I believe that, uh, our officers should be paid, but my question is, wouldn't we be able to do this for other, for the other divisions?
I don't know. Again, I didn't address the other divisions. I just use.
Well, I understand that, I understand it, Bobby. I, you know, I know that's not your, your role, you know, but, uh, that's my question. But, you know, if, if the court pleases to see this, I'm, I'm behind it. But I think it's only fair that other divisions, uh, are compensated also. You take, you take my boys, or Greg's boys, or Bruce's boys, or even David's folks that are out there in the field working, you know? Uh, I feel like there needs to be some compensation for them.
A bunch of years coming up, Commissioner, I couldn't agree with you more.
Probably not any other. Uh, I, I know our folks that don't have contact with the public that they're required to have, and, uh.
Your dump, your dump people does, Greg. Your dump folks work the, the dump every day. Me and you talked about that yesterday.
And I'm giving stuff, I've come to dump down for two days, they're only working two days a week.
I'm hoping the crew's going to have to go hands-on like we do too, so.
Dwight?
Uh, you know, I'm out of this, but, you know, talking about other departments and things like this, you know, the sheriff's department, if y'all, that's y'all's decision, y'all will do that. But if we're going to go through every department and let them start cleaning out their budget at the year end, what, uh, James Gillie and was talking about us having strong cash reserves, that's going to be a thing of history if we start doing this every year with every department. You know, I know this is a one-time thing, but.
Yep.
This is, and the sheriff's department, you know, sheriff's department's been out, and I, I don't have no problem with that. I'm just saying, if we're going to start letting people, these, every other department doing that, we're going to walk ourselves right off a cliff.
Right, and I, that's why I sent that stuff to Mr. Poston. I believe it needs to be addressed in the employee handbook. And department heads will not have to come out and do something like this.
Yeah, I mean, but, you know, I, the county doesn't have the money to, like, say, Kim's office, pay all of her people. I mean, there's, I mean, she don't have enough budget, and the money's not anywhere else.
Right.
Okay, the sheriff's got the money, that's y'all's decision, but before we just start blanketing, paying it, all four hundred and fifty employees an extra eight dollars an hour for any year, we don't have it, and we can't do it. But that's just my point.
I agree.
Okay, we don't, this, we, we called for a vote. We had three that voted, Leon, I didn't get your vote. Was he aye or nay? Yea, okay. All right, that motion carries. Therefore, passed. Thank you all.
Thank you all, Commissioner. Thank you all. Dwayne, Matthew.
All right, number eight, Senator Prue requests a change order number one for the whole freshwater, uh, search park project. This project being funded by Texas Department of Agriculture grant. David?
Good morning.
There you are. How are you doing?
I am fine, Judge. How's everybody?
Hey, how's your back feeling today?
Well, you know, it's a little stiff, but I'm above ground and taking on nourishment.
All right, good deal. All right, thank you.
Got the item eight is a change order for a, uh, Texas Department of Agriculture grant for the city of Hull. And we agreed to front that grant. What they've got is a, a compartmentalized rock reed filtered treatment plant. And they've discovered that several of the cells in this treatment plant are completely full on sewage, sewer sludge. So they're going to have to be, uh, a dragline brought in, it's going to have to empty those cells out. It's going to have a total cost of ninety thousand dollars. Now, to come up with this money on this grant, what we're proposing to do, what the engineer has proposed, they're going to reduce some, uh, valve installations and other items and save forty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. And then, uh, we'll go back to TDA for an additional request of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, and that'll make our ninety grand. So we're not looking at any additional money here. We're just pushing some money around. We're canceling some activities and adding others. So we're going to ask you at this time, if you would please approve change order number one for the whole Dazetta project. Question?
Matthew, you, Matthew, are you, uh, you good with this?
I don't, I don't believe that's a problem because we're not, we're not changing anything. We're just more or less reallocating.
Okay, I'll make the motion we approve.
Motion Leon, second, Greg to approve. All favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Likewise, Dave. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine, Senator Prue, payment request number one, Texas Department of Agriculture grant for work being done on the whole freshwater search park sewer treatment facility, uh, to T Johnson Industries in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and two cents. It's just their first draw, David?
Yes, sir, this is their first draw, and, uh, LJA is the engineer of record on this project. Manuel Mendoza is handling this, and he has basically signed off on the change order. So we're going to ask you to approve change or approve this payment to T Johnson Industries for fifty-nine, five sixty-nine oh two. And, uh, we'll get the paperwork into the judge's office this afternoon and get everything signed off.
Will I make a motion to approve? Second.
Bruce, second, Greg to approve. All favor say aye. It is unanimous, thank you, gentlemen, and that motion carries. Number ten, consider approved payment request number two for the whole freshwater search park project funded by Texas Department of Agriculture. A payment to T Johnson Industries in the amount of thirty-six thousand, five dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Same thing, Judge. Again, this has gone through LJA. They're recommending this payment. Uh, they have approved the payment. And so we're going to ask the court today to approve the request for payment number two on the whole freshwater supply district, uh, project. And, uh, then we'll get the appropriate documents in for the judge's signature and for draws.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion. Motion Greg, second, Bruce, to approve. All favor say aye. Motion is unanimous, thank you, gentlemen. Our, the motion has. Number eleven, consider approved request for Colony Ridge for the approval of preliminary plat for Santa Fe, section eight. David?
All right, sir, uh, we, I've been in touch with LJA several times this week already on this subject. And they are recommending that we go ahead and approve the preliminary plat. Again, let me stress the preliminary plat. Uh, the preliminary plat, as you all know, is simply a placeholder. It does not have any construction documents with it. So Manuel Mendoza is recommending that we, we go ahead and approve the preliminary plat for Santa Fe, section eight. Now, all of the documentation has been provided to our engineer on the final plat. That's where the drainage plans are at. That's where all your road construction plans are at. There's going to be a little more study involved in this because part of the drainage in that area uh, for section eight is going to include some enlargement of Orange Creek. And so the engineering firm is working with Colony Ridge's firm. Our Colony Ridge is engineer, and, uh, we're anticipating we'll get everything worked out sometime in the next few weeks. So let's go ahead and do a preliminary plat for Santa Fe, section eight. And then once we've got all of our issues worked out, uh, I'll bring the final plat back to you at that time.
Okay. What's the court's pleasure?
Take the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion Boo, second, Leon to approve preliminary plat, Santa Fe, section eight. All favor say aye. Likewise, Dave. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twelve, consider approved the Liberty County Clerk records archival and retention plan for 2021 as required by the local code, section eleven eighteen point zero two five.
You just have to keep it going. So this is part of the budget process to prove that we continue to restore books. We've only gotten two months into it so far. We've got two more months of this fiscal year. Uh, we've got books coming in probably next month. The historical commission has met, looked at them, approved them. They're very excited about it. Uh, but this is just for you to approve us continuing to do it for another year. The restoration project on the, uh, permanent records in the county clerk's office.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
And motion Greg, excuse me, Bruce. Second, Greg. All favor say aye. Likewise, Dave. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number thirteen, Senator Prue, in her local agreement with Houston, Illinois, the property owners association, in which the property owners association will pay to the county certain costs of employing an additional deputy fire marshal in exchange for the co- uh, county hiring an additional fire marshal. Now, Leon, I know you, it asks people this, and you can't because it's an agenda, and you can talk to the cows. You have anything you want to say?
Well, you addressed my hollering earlier. I hope you addressed dress codes. Why don't you sure address my hollering?
We'll get to that too.
Okay, and then, um, uh, there's a need for a fire marshal out there? I'm, I'm asking you.
Come on up here.
Let, let's talk about that because, I mean, there's a need for a fire marshal out there? I mean, I'm not understanding with the, there's a need for an ESD out there too, but let's talk about the fire marshal. And they're going to pay for it, so is that like their way of saying that they know that they need help out there with all the fire instructors that they allow? I'm asking you, why would they need one? Why would you even put it under budget? Why are you considering it?
Uh, Mr. Ullman is online, if you could address that.
Why, why are we considering it? I mean, it's, it's coincidental that Plum Grove gets their documents in order for an ESD, and all of a sudden they need a fire marshal out there to set some type of precedent? So they can say that they're trying to bring about their long-term plan by the year twenty twenty-five? I mean, why do we need a fire marshal and pay for it? If they're going to be paying somebody, why don't they give their funds to the fire department that's already doing all the work out there?
He has to unmute it on his end.
Okay.
Bill, unmute it, unmute your computer on. Is Bill overwhelmed? That's what I'm asking. Bill, is Colony Ridge overwhelmed you?
He's still muted.
Um, now, there's, there's a lot of development going there, and, and we just adopted the two thousand and eighteen international fire codes. Uh, as you guys know, I've, I've got a limited staff. Um, and so, yes, we are, we are busy. We have other activities going on within the county.
And this is within Colony Ridge? This is basically attributed to a lot of irresponsible growth?
Uh, ma'am, I.
I mean, that fire marshal's going, yes or no? Is it going to be a secondary fire marshal that helps you with all the areas? Or is it going to be pertaining to one district because they're paying for it?
We're going to have that person specifically from that district.
For that, so you are overwhelmed, but I'm just, I'm just trying to get some factual information here. It looks like we're going to be back here on Friday. I'm just trying to get some information ready for our arguments on Friday, that you are overwhelmed by. But you need help in the Colony Ridge area.
We do need help.
You can't, and you, you guys can't afford that from tax money.
We don't have it in our budget.
And, and so you could, I mean, when do you do your budget again?
We're doing it now.
So why wouldn't you just wait and put it in the new budget as opposed to having Colony Ridge pay for something else? They already paid tax money. Why do they have to come out of pocket for anything else?
You understand budgets, don't you?
Uh, no.
Okay, just checking.
I mean, I mean, if you want to pay for it, we're taking it. We don't, we don't, we don't need the money. We're going to take it.
The point is, Greg, is that they need a fire marshal out there, correct? Because it's wrong so much.
We just adopted the new fire code, and it's going to, that's going to add, add a lot of responsibility to the bill. The whole county is growing. That area is growing specifically faster than the rest of the county.
And Bill, I do agree that you need help. I'm not trying to take away your help from you. I do agree that you need help. I just think it's something that the county should put in their budget and that they should pay for as opposed to another donation from Colony Ridge.
I'm just trying to know that. All right, just one second.
He's not signed up to talk. I'm talking to you, Jack.
Just a minute. Any budgets? Okay, say for instance, I want to add another donation shift. You know what the cost is? What is?
Well, we're looking at somewhere at around forty-five thousand dollars for one.
About a hundred thousand. About a hundred and twenty thousand.
For one guy. And so he helps you with those.
Yes.
Along with about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in interlocal agreement payments already through Almore Tech.
That's stuff that we, as a county cannot afford, not at the rate we're growing. And that's just, I mean, that's, we'll take you out anywhere we can get. I mean, if.
It's always from Colony Ridge, so that's what I know. You get a lot of donations from Colony Ridge. That's like your third or fourth this year.
And, uh, if it's included in that three eighty-one, that, uh, I believe that's what we're talking about. Let's see, the three eighty-one grant? Well, this, this would be something just like, uh, the sheriff. Oh, okay, it's a POA.
More, there's more of the POA.
That's correct.
More, more of Almore Tech.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I wish the sheriff had twelve deputies out there. Actually, I wish he had twenty-four deputies.
He'd be twelve hundred, doing the efficient job.
But I'm just saying, yeah, I would take, I would take them. If the POA could accept that kind of a responsibility in, uh, monetary payments to the county.
For y'all, it's like y'all have a developer who makes money off his POA, and can you get money like that? That's real nice.
It is.
Um, I, I just want to set the precedent, uh, at this meeting that there's so much growth in that area that you need a new fire marshal for that area. That's all that I was trying to set for that.
We, we do.
I mean, I just, it goes hands in hand with the ESD.
If there's any way that we can keep people safe, and Bill is.
I absolutely agree. That's why I'm such a promoter of the ESD. Keeping people safe should be our goal, not trying to get more revenue for the county.
Judge?
Yes, sir.
Can't hear you, Bill.
Barely.
I said, we're just trying to protect the people in that particular area.
Thank you, Bill. We've been doing it for seven years as a fire department in Plum Grove. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Judge?
Judge? Yes, sir.
Um, I'm not sure, I spoke with somebody out of the property management company that runs the POAs, and she's on. I don't think she's had conversations with anybody about this.
Okay.
So, um, and I don't know if to limit her budget for the fire marshal. So, uh, maybe the best thing would be to table this, let me talk to Bill, and then we can put it back on.
That's fine.
Is that good with you, Bill? I think it's valid.
But he says it's valid, he. All right, then, uh, court's pleasure?
I'm ready to tell him. Second.
All right, he's got a motion. All right, got a motion for Greg. We don't have anybody, they don't have anybody, we don't have anyone. No, got a motion Greg, second Bruce to table this, and we'll bring it back up at later time, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, Dave.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion from Bruce to adjourn. Second Greg, all favor say aye. We gotta talk a little bit. She's the alien. James Gillie? James Gillie. Dave, Jim. You guys have some on one of the questions, and they, I think that's right. We were looking at. I was like, you know, that's what we said, let's do this panel. No, I'm tired. Anyway.
So if their tax, if their tax is frozen, they have to freeze it, but if they go and have an extra six hours, you have to have tax on that.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't like that, they told me, their taxes are all appropriately there, and they can get a better.
I don't like that. Yeah, that, I have a question, probably, don't take it. Well, they, they submitted a number, they didn't just, but hell, they've been called, I'm looking at the county.
I got to come all the way around. And no house, there are no trains, it's just, all this, just, it's.